... President of the United States of America and through the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Goss, a real call please.
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Willie Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Albrecht.
Here.
Ms. DeMery.
Here.
Ms. O'Hamlin.
Here.
Mrs. Seber.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Morales.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions and corrections to the agenda?
There are. For the consent agenda, we have a personnel, ratification of personnel, finance and operations, budget transfers, I mean, the closed session regarding personnel matters.
Thank you very much. Next is superintendents announcements and spotlights. I believe Mrs. Radford will take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. I would like Ms. Kiefer and Dr. McGurk to come forward as we have a few spotlights that we would like to recognize tonight. So, good evening to everyone that is here. We are excited to have you join us tonight. I'm pleased to be able to shine the spotlight on two students from Osborne High School tonight. First, I'd like to invite Gladys Gonzalez to the front. Gladys, are you here? Okay, go ahead. Gladys was selected to represent Osborne High School in the Martin Luther King Junior Youth Oratorical Contest hosted by the Prince William Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta. The annual event was held at the Hilton Memorial Chapel in Woodbridge on Monday, January 15th, the day of the National Observance for Martin Luther King's birthday. Gladys was one of three high school students chosen for this honor among the schools in Prince William, Manassas City and Manassas Park. Given the theme in his own words, "Yesterday, today, tomorrow," Gladys spoke boldly in front of an audience of more than a thousand people. Gladys is one of Osborne's Eagle Writing Center tutors. This was her second year in a row winning the regional competition and advancing to the stage at the program held on Martin Luther King Day. We offer special thanks to Tracy Mazzaro, Gladys's oratorical coordinator, and certainly to her family, who I believe are here today for their support, the many hours spent helping her prepare for her presentation, which we were able to witness. I promise you that Gladys represented us all well, and we are very proud of her. Congratulations to you, Gladys. Our next spotlight, Leon Sanga. Could you please come forward? Leon is a junior at Osborne. Let me pull up his information here real quick so I can show you. All right. Here we go. All right. Leon is a junior at Osborne. His artistic gifts have taken him to many exciting places and opened doors that many of us could only dream of. I would like to take a moment to showcase a bit of his work, which I'm sure will leave you amazed. Last year, he obtained an apprenticeship with the Center for the Arts in Old Town Manassas, and during this great opportunity, he logged many hours working on various projects. So I want to show you a few of those. As you can see here, the off-the-wall gallery that was there, you can see a sample of a dress that he designed. Wearable art competition. I know, it's amazing. Here you can see where he won first place in the wearable art for 2016. It's constructed entirely of upcycled, non-traditional materials. I know, they're amazing, Leon. I told you. Here for the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts, the Teen Styling 2016 Competition, you can see he was the winner there for the most wearable. And I think we know what these items were made of, right? This is a statewide competition, and I mean, just to see the technique that he uses is amazing. I just, you know, talking to the people at the Center for the Arts, I think, you know, just the age that he is, people are just really blown away by the amount of detail in the artwork that he produces. As you can see, it's constructed entirely of upcycled, non-traditional materials. It is certainly a coveted honor because of the challenges, and it is on display at the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts for a year, which is amazing for him being a student at Osborne High School. And he also won an all-expense-paid trip to New York City to visit professional fashion designer studios. Yes. Here you see a window display that he designed. Another project was for the Center for the Arts Gingerbread House Workshop, and so he was very instrumental for the success of that project. There's some of his clients that helped with that. And then the Leadership Prince William Arts Day Project, he offered assistance with that under the Center for the Arts Education Director, individual art kits for 36 participants in group art. Here at the Bristow location, he's seen modeling for portrait and figure drawing classes. So he's very multi-dimensional. And then he provided setup and cleanup assistance for adult and children's classes on the main level in the third-floor art room at the Center for the Arts. I was told that he provided over 151 hours of service to the Center for the Arts last year, and he is still continuing to assist them this year as a junior. And here he's showing with some volunteers that helped with one of the events around Halloween in Old Town Manassas. I did ask Leon to bring a few of his pieces with him that he can show you. I'm just astounded by the amount of talent that he has. A self-portrait, yes. Unfortunately for us, many of the pieces that you've seen, you know, displayed on the screen are not in his possession because they're on display in places across the state, and that's what an honor that is. So we definitely, you know, we know that we have many talented students at Osborne, but I can tell you that these real-life experiences are so important, and the fact that he was able to lend his gifts and talents to the Center for the Arts and in turn learn about the processes that they had in place there is awesome. So we just wanted to congratulate Leon and commend him on the great work that he's been doing.
He has all of these hours, and he still makes excellent grades. So good time management.
Thank you. Okay, let me get this. Our final recognitions for the evening, our Washington Post Teacher of the Year nominees. Each year, the Washington Post recognizes pre-K through 12th grade teachers who contribute in a substantive way to the improvement of education in the greater DC area by exemplifying excellence in their profession. The goal of the award is to ensure students receive a high-quality education through creative instruction. Additionally, nominees must have a minimum of five years' teaching in an accredited school system and must demonstrate the ability to instill in students a desire to learn and achieve, understand the individual needs of students, encourage their talents and foster their self-esteem, demonstrate a thorough knowledge of their subject matter and the ability to share it effectively with students, foster cooperative relationships with their colleagues and the community, and then also demonstrate outstanding leadership. Tonight, as I call the names of the nominees from each school, I will briefly share some information about how they demonstrate an understanding of the individual needs of students, encourage their talents and foster their self-esteem. From Baldwin Elementary School, we have a kindergarten teacher, Ashley Slaney. Ms. Slaney was nominated for her ability to reach the earliest learners and, as a result, set them on a path of learning and achievement for years to come. She began her career at MCPS in 2012 as a head start teacher at Round Elementary School. Her ability to tailor instruction so that each student can apply their natural gifts and talents while also helping them adjust to going to school impacts both students, parents and fellow teachers in a positive way. Her success in the classroom is what has led to her serving as the kindergarten lead teacher at Baldwin, where she mentors a team of six teachers with the collaborative goal of helping her grade level meet the needs of all students. Congratulations to Next, we have a STEM coach from Jenny Dean, Kristy Morton. Ms. Morton began her career in education as a first-grade teacher for MCPS in 2002. She has never wavered in her ability to make sure both students and staff have access to the materials they need to be successful. Her fellow teachers and nominators say it is her genuine love of learning, open-mindedness, and ability to adapt that has helped her excel as a lead mentor for Jenny Dean. She most recently collaborated with fellow teachers to help secure a technology grant for her school. It is her ability to foster self-esteem among her students and provide a positive role model for her fellow teachers that have helped achieve great results for her school. Congratulations, Ms. Morton. From Hayden Elementary School, second-grade teacher, Sheston McMahon. Ms. McMahon has been a dedicated employee of Manassas City Public Schools for nearly 30 years. Her nominators say she has always had a way of reaching the most vulnerable of students through her consistent and nurturing approach in the classroom. She is recognized by her peers as a supportive, caring and compassionate coworker, which has led to her being a lead mentor and grade-level teacher at Hayden. She is a perfect example of how a teacher can be sensitive to the needs of students while also challenging them to ensure academic success. Congratulations. Thanks. Fourth-grade teacher from Round Elementary School, Jennifer Faria. Ms. Faria's nominators describe her classroom as one of inclusion and encouragement. Visitors to her classroom may often hear celebratory shout-outs for a student who demonstrated academic success or see a student reading to another student. Her ability to provide accommodations for all students, whether they need extra support or to be challenged, has not gone unnoticed by the school community. She was selected as a grade-level lead teacher and mentor teacher one year after joining the Round team. Congratulations. Special education teacher from Williams Elementary School, Stephanie Fisher. Ms. Fisher has worked in special education in MCPS since 2000. Her nominators say she consistently and effectively reaches her students by collaborating with coworkers, parents and the school community. She utilizes her school's Talents and Gifts Program, "The Future Me," by bringing in community business leaders as guest speakers to help students recognize their skill sets and possible future aspirations. Her nominators say she is eager to assist fellow teachers and parents in order to guarantee student success. Thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have a fifth-grade Science and Social Studies teacher from Baldwin Intermediate School, Amy Bussard. Ms. Bussard began her career with MCPS in 2014 as a third-grade teacher before moving on to help make the newest MCPS school a success. At Baldwin Intermediate, she continues to integrate technology in the classroom to deliver individualized instruction based on the needs of the students. Ms. Bussard is recognized by her nominators as being a mentor to both students and teachers. Her ability to reach her students socially lends itself to their academic success. She also serves as a mentor in the Teacher Education and Mentor Program. Congratulations. From Mayfield Intermediate, Special Education Teacher, Kristen Gates. Since beginning her career with MCPS in 2012, Ms. Gates strives daily to get to know each of her students in order to understand how they learn and what motivates them. As a result, she is able to instruct her students using activities and resources that are engaging and effective. It's been said that one can actually hear the excitement in her voice as she shares student success stories. Ms. Gates, through speaking with her students, observing their interactions and communicating with others, develops a keen understanding of her students' individual needs. Knowing this, she encourages them to build on what they know in order to become successful in her classroom. Congratulations. From Metz Middle School, science teacher, Ronald Adam. Mr. Adam has been with Manassas City Public Schools for five years, all of which have been at Metz Middle School. As a science teacher, he provides instruction for students of all ability levels and does so with equal respect, energy and effectiveness. His approach to teaching allows all students to feel equally successful within his classroom. He uses small groups, individualized instruction through technology, whole group and one-to-one methods based upon where he is teaching a concept. His students feel successful daily, weekly and at the end of the year because of the time he dedicates to them and his instructional And from Osborne High School, physics teacher, Christine Hever. Ms. Hever joined the Osborne Teaching Staff in 2012, where she now teaches all levels of physics offered at the school. According to her nominators, as she truly understands the individual needs of students, encourages their talents and fosters their self-esteem, she does this by reviewing her student schedules prior to the start of the school year to get an understanding of the strengths and abilities of her students, particularly in the aspect of their mathematical skills. She then will tailor lessons and activities to suit the needs of the majority of her students. Her very teaching style allows her to spark student interest and passion for physics and engineering, and as a result, student enrollment in the physics program has flourished at each level offered. Congratulations So these are the representatives from each school for the Washington Post Teacher of the Year, and we will not be able to name who the winner is for the division just yet because that information is embargoed by the Washington Post until they make the announcement closer to the spring, usually around spring break timeframe, but we kind of never know when they're going to do that. But at that time, we'll be able to make that announcement to everybody. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you so much for all the work that you do on behalf of our students. And I would like to quickly add that, as some of our principals were seeing with their cellphones up taking pictures, I would like to add that this week is Principal Appreciation Week. And so many of them are here supporting their staffs tonight. So, yes. I know. So certainly, we appreciate our principals, our assistant principals, and the work that they do supporting their staffs and their students. So if you're out in the schools this weekend, you see them walking around, you know, just thank them for what they do every day. Good night, you all. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. That was awesome. Happy Principal Week, and congratulations to all the winners. Thank you. Next on the agenda is board committees comments. I have on this list, there are no committee reports, but I will go through just to be safe. Academics Committee, Ms. Seber.
No report.
Policy Committee, Ms. Kiefer.
No.
Ms. DeMery, Education Support.
No.
Mr. Albrecht, Finance Committee.
That is correct, no report.
Personnel Committee.
No report, sir.
Okay, cool. It's a good trial run, so make sure you're accurate. Next up is board member comments. We will start with our student representative, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few announcements to make tonight. Friday marks the application deadline for Osborne High School students interested in becoming Eagle Writing Center tutors next school year. Also, tomorrow at 8:00 in the morning marks the beginning of the Chinese Exchange Student Program, in which students follow other Os- excuse me, Osborne High School students around the entire school day. So they'll go block to block with us, and I'm actually going to have an exchange student. So that'll be really fun. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. DeMery.
Well, thank you, sir. Today, we, three of us, Ms. Seber, all these of us, Mr. O'Hamlin, Seber, and the president of the OSBA, he, I can't hold the time here. We were lucky enough to attend the OSBA Legislative Conference in Richmond yesterday and today. Found out a lot of things that are going on in the legislature, which, it was surprising this year. I've gone to this for a decade now. There were quite a few things more than usual that the OSBA supported as opposed to oppose. There were, you notice a lot of things that the OSBA doesn't oppose. And we took that all in, and then Mr. O'Hamlin, Ms. Seber, and I went and visited with Senator Hite and Delegate Carter, and expressed our views, and hopefully Delegate was able to support us the way we asked them to. There were a couple things that were a little bit not full agreement, but everybody listened in, everybody respected, and so it was a very successful trip. And I think we need to take it all in, and we got to. Mr. Albrecht, if you visit with us, because he was too important to teach in classes and so on, and being president. Friday night, at Osborne Park, the girls' basketball team plays at 6:00, and the boys happen to follow at 7:30. We always go watch the boys play, get there at the end of the girls' game, and then watch the boys play. Girls start at 6:00. Ms. DeMery, give me a good eye right now, a positive eye. I usually go bad, but if you're going to go to the games, let's try and get there at 6:00. There's more rules too, right?
Right.
So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. O'Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DeMery, you covered most of what I was going to cover, but I do want to congratulate all our honorees tonight. Gladys Gonzalez for her entry in the oratory contest, Leon for his fine artwork, and for all our Teacher of the Year nominees. Congratulations all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Seber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations to all of those that were honored here tonight, both students and teachers. As Mr. DeMery mentioned, we went down for the Capitol Conference, and I would like to mention that there's over 300 bills, proposed legislation that affects education alone. So it's a lot to keep track of. We shared our thoughts. Some of it included school suspensions, and some of it was about funding. It was raining in Richmond, but it's not raining money just yet. I did want to do a shout-out to the academic team that swept districts, Osborne Academic Team Squad. They call themselves Oats. They competed in regionals last night. They came in third behind Langley and McLean, but ahead of three other very competitive teams. So, good job to them. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
First, I'd like to congratulate Leon for his wearable artwork. All his story reminded me of when I was in high school. I was in fashion merchandising, and one of my favorite things we did was go to New York City. So he's going to really enjoy that trip. Gladys, your speech to the Martin Luther King Junior's Day really ties into these fantastic teachers that are nominated for the Washington Post Teacher of the Year. Everybody provides inspiration somehow, some way. Mr. King certainly did, and obviously, all these teachers did as well. So congratulations. I'm excited to hear who actually wins. Hopefully, it's somebody from this district. I attended the Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation meeting, and two things I wanted to point out. That group has grown tremendously in the past several years, and last year, there were, one of the big things the foundation does is give student grants. I mean, I'm sorry, teacher grants. They do do student grants, but I'm specifically talking about teacher grants. And last year, there were 12 applicants. This year, there were 32. So that really shows the impact that the foundation has on our school system here, and I'm just so proud that they exist and the hard work everybody does. And I'm going to also have, going to have to plug in, I don't know if I did this last time, but people tend to think the Education Foundation receives lots of donations from large businesses, but we really want to point out, especially this is the 25th year of their existence, that people may donate, just go to their website, look it up, Google it, and you can donate as little as $25. Everybody in our community can donate to our public education. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. A sincere thank you to Mr. O'Hamlin, Ms. Seber, Mr. DeMery, for giving up two days and sitting through a couple of boring and a couple of really interesting sessions yesterday, and to our state delegate and our state senators for making the time, with the five of them, to get together and talk about what's important and pending legislation. Mr. DeMery is right, I mean, as the state association, we oppose some things, we support some things. What we're all about is advocating for all children and local control of our schools. So to that end, we support those things, and that's right for Manassas, because the reality is local control is what we need. What's right for Manassas may or may not be, was right for Prince William, Fairfax, and most likely not be, are right for Lee County. Thank you, Mr. Williams and Mrs. Kiefer, for attending new chair and vice chair. Satie was obligated to embarrass all too much today. We also have the opportunity to hear from our new State Secretary of Education, who is a former Prince William County teacher. So it's the first time in my 17, 18 years on a school board that I can recall the State Secretary of Education being a former educator, and more importantly, is the parent of a 10 and a 15-year-old boy. So he firsthand knows what's going on in education. I applaud the new governor for that appointment, and he's created a new cabinet position, the State Secretary of Workforce Development, who came and spoke to us this morning. Really neat hearing hers, and her most wonderful talk was about Larry the Cable Guy. And let's go back 20 years and think about Larry the Cable Guy, and then think about today, when you call and have whoever your provider is, you're in a service provider who happens to also provide your cable TV, come, and what they do with wireless networks and passwords and smart TVs and everything they have to do. It's the same job, but it's a radically different workforce development and career readiness we have to get our students ready for. So it was really positive to hear what the governor's thinking, and where that's going across the Commonwealth. Last, I'd like to just comment about the presentation we received last week in a budget work session. Talk about salary schedules. And it was really sobering. It's probably a great word to put it, because I can remember in my tenure on this board, as I said that evening, where we prided ourselves on having a salary schedule that exceeded Prince William County. And those are bragging rights. But when you look at the data they presented and the thousands of dollars at every single pay step that we now lag behind our neighboring jurisdiction, you have to wonder what we've done, what we've allowed it to. When you put that in perspective with the budget presentations we received yesterday, very similar to the data we get from Mr. Hawkins, the state is giving us the same amount of money on a per pupil basis today, and forget inflation, because no one gives you money for inflation. for inflation as we got seven, eight, or nine years ago. The onus has been put on the locality. Prince William as a community has kept up and met that challenge. We unfortunately have not been able to. I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know if it's fair and appropriate to say you get what you pay for, but if you value it, those are some tough decisions this board has this budget year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Vice chairman, Ms. Kiefer.
That's a tough act to follow. What else do I have to say? I just wanted to congratulate everybody who was honored tonight, the teachers, our students, and even though we might not have heard it, we were honoring the principals, who were too busy congratulating their teachers to take the moment for us to appreciate you as well. You just stand up there and listen to what's written up about these people, and it's just really, I mean, all you can walk away saying is wow, and putting the faces to the names and all the great things you hear. It's just nice to celebrate that. And I do wanna just shout out, I know a couple of principals are still here, happy principal appreciation week to you. We do appreciate you. It is probably one of the most difficult jobs, and also probably one of the most undervalued in many ways and underappreciated. It's a tough job, so thank you personally. And I just wanted to say we're halfway almost through the school year. I know it might not feel that way to the staff, but my kids have reminded me that it is. So just keep going, keep plugging away, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. Next is me. Congratulations to all the honorees and to our principals here. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you, and I know some students here as well, so thank you all for coming out. My comments are kind of dovetailing with what Mr. Albert said. Our agreement with city council for the school city budget expires FY 2019. It's time to novation a new agreement, and I have appointed our finance committee, which is Mr. Albert, Ms. Kiefer, and Mr. Demaria, to work with city council's finance committee and get together and work in a collaborative, collegial way to obtain a new agreement. So I'm sure that those folks will represent us well, and we look forward to seeing what transpires. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. I'm gonna read the disclaimer that we always read. At this time, welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizen comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. I have three people signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who has not signed up? All right, seeing one, I have Rick Ruski, Brian Muskie, and Taylor Ruski, so you can go with whoever you like.
I'm Brian Muskie.
I'm Taylor Ruski.
I'm not exactly sure if this is the right form to speak at or not, but I'm speaking as a basically upset and discouraged parent. My son was assaulted at Metz Middle School, and unfortunately, this is, I think, the second time within the last two years that you all have had to hear about this occurrence at one of your schools. And I think it's, unfortunately, an occurrence that happens a little bit too often in the city of Manassas schools. I don't, like I said, I don't know if this is the right form to speak at or not. I did get the chance to speak to the superintendent before the meeting, Mrs. Stone. We have talked with her, and she's been great. She has helped us out, but unfortunately, no one else at the school has reached out to us to even ask how my son is doing. I've pulled all three of my kids from the middle school because it's not a safe environment. I don't know if you all are responsible to try to get this fixed or not. The code of conduct at this school needs to be looked at, and again, I don't know if you all are responsible to get in touch with whoever is responsible for the code of conduct, and I know you all aren't gonna respond to these questions, but somebody needs to look at the code of conduct and try to make sure that assaults are looked at as not fights, but as what they are assaults. I'm gonna let my kids say their piece, if you don't mind.
Like my father said, I'm in eighth grade and go to Metz Middle School, and it happened on Wednesday, the 10th. I was walking back to my locker from lunch and was halfway there when I felt someone come up behind me and hit me a couple times in the back of the head. It was a horrifying experience and should never happen to anyone ever. I look at this incident and wonder why it happened. Half of the problem, I think, is the school code of conduct, and it states that any form of assault would be a 10-day suspension, when it really should be a zero tolerance and expulsion. I am gonna be returning to school, hopefully to make a change, and I'm gonna try to start a group to make that change however I can, and that's all I have to say.
Last year at Marshall, I was bullied by a group of girls, in person and online. I went to the administrators and they basically did nothing. It continued until it was unbearable. Ways to prevent these issues in a weathered environment is to have a no tolerance policy for any form of violence or verbal harassment, and I believe that phones should not be allowed at school. Phones are only used for mischief and they're disruptive in class. Thank you.
One last thing, if you don't mind. I know last year, they tried to put in force the PBIS, and I don't think that went over too well. So, as my kids said, they are gonna return to school on Monday. We've met with Dr. Stone. She's got with, I think, the principal as well as the guidance counselor. My kids would like to try to get together with a group and hopefully form some sort of a committee to try to get the students as well as the teachers and faculty, and hopefully, if anybody on the board would like to be involved, they would love to try to get some group together to try to help, try to curb this problem in the future, and anything you all can do to help would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Next up is the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mr. Demaria, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carry, seven to zero. Next on the agenda is the discussion agenda. I'm starting with finance and operations, stop on camera system. Mr. Andy Hawkins making the presentation.
Good evening. We instituted the stop on camera system approximately a year ago. It was on January 13th. Last year, on January 13th, we started the stop on camera system, so it's appropriate at this time for us to be able to give you an update of what has happened during that year. Since that time, we've had over 1,800 citations issued. On average, we've had almost 11 violations per day, and on average, every one of our buses have been passed 31 times. Of these 1,842 citations, a little more than 1,100 of them have been satisfied or paid, which is 60% of remaining, 731 are still in the process of being paid. So let's just give you a breakdown by month, how many citations were issued. We can see the first six months. So we had citations of about 12, 12 per day, or a little over 19 per bus. So we do have some encouraging news today. I don't know if this bothers you, but we do have some encouraging news. The citations are, on a per-date basis and a per-bus basis, seem to be going down over the first half of this, of this school year. So where are all the problems at, or most of them? Almost 70% of the citations are being issued in these five areas. So you can, you can see where they are. It's not a surprise to us that these are the places where we knew that they were, that we were having issues before we instituted this stop on camera system. So are there, are there any questions, concerns that the board might have at this time?
Mr. Hawkins, at our last discussion about this, we asked about more signage, and I'm not confident it would help, but I'm sure it wouldn't hurt. Have we gone forward to the city and asked them about more signage in these areas? Because I've looked at these areas, and what I'd like to do is to stop picking up kids there, but I don't think that's a possibility. Well, I mean, you know, if we could, if we could figure out a way not to pick them up on these, because we don't want citations, we want safe kids. But I don't, I mean, unless you guys are, have a whole lot more insight than I do, I don't see any other way to do it. So if we could signage and/or, you know, would they put markings on the street even? You know, stop for the buses wherever our bus stops are. Hopefully, our bus stops don't change year to year and we make them, you know, black those over, but-
They don't change significantly.
Right. So just something to try and keep the kids safe in these areas, because if we're gonna have an accident, I think our 70% chance is gonna be on those five spots.
That's right.
So if there's any way to do that, I would think that'd be a good idea. I don't know if anybody else does or not.
Okay. Let's go.
Two thoughts as I look at it, and 1,842. If anyone were a gambling person, and we knew this was about student safety, at some point, we're not gonna like to wear the dice rolls, because every one of these is an opportunity for a child to be hit by a car. My question really is on the first two, Centerville Road, Route 28. And I think Mr. O'Hamlin, while we're having this discussion, and I think Ms. Seberg even said, she was a little confused, because there's the rule about divided highway, what's a divided highway, and I guess those roads, while they're four lanes, maybe with a turn lane, but they're not divided.
That's right.
Is this an educational thing, with people not knowing what the rules are? You know, do we have any idea? And obviously, the one on Centerville Road is probably tied to the action this council took, and it's tied to the trailer park, and there's no way we're gonna change that.
Well, we have, we have with the police and Dr. Gork and all, the transportation that George and I had brought out to that stop in particular, trying to say, do we have to pick the children up here? Can we go into the trailer park area to go and pick those students up? And we just can't. I mean, first of all, that's not a city road. Second of all, the road is very narrow going down through there. We would cause more of a hazard for us to go in there. We would be more concerned about hitting another vehicle or other children in the neighborhood than doing that on the road. So we would, we have explored that area in particular, trying to find a better way to pick those students up.
So a very cynical comment is our council sought to fix the sewers, but put children's lives at risk every day.
Dr. Gork.
I would just like to add that all of these roads, I'm not so sure that the people that are being ticketed are the city of Manassas residents. If you consider that everybody that uses Centerville, 28, it's that pass through to get to wherever they're going. And I do agree, I think the signs, signage is a, is a good idea, but people just need to slow down and think about what they're doing on the road.
Ms. Seberg.
Mr. Hawkins, the difference, Centerville Road, we can, is that like right in front of the trailer park, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then Route 28?
So the road changes, it's about three times. So you have Centerville Road, and then on the other side of downtown, it will actually be, it's next to the road, and Route 28 is actually where it turns to on that side.
One of the questions, and the best I can give off the phone, is since that side-
So, now the funds, for that much of the year, for FY 18, these funds have not been budgeted and have not been expended in any way. We have to come to you maybe September 3rd with another proposal on how we might be able to use these funds to provide increased safety for our students and their buses. So I'll just give you a little tease as far as where it's going.
Mrs. Williams, Ms. Kiefer. Thank you for the presentation, information is very useful and very important, and thank you for the thought and commentary, because hopefully, by continuing discussing this and putting this out there, we'll be able to rectify this and get those numbers down. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the action agenda. The first item, old business, school board meeting date revision. So I assume Dr. Gork will handle this one?
Yes. So last week, we received a phone call from Jiffy Lube, and they said that we needed to change our graduation date, because the date that we, the school had originally selected was now going to be a concert date. When we scheduled with Jiffy Lube, that's one of the things they tell us, is that they have up through January to take our date. It's the first time that it's happened in six years. So what we need to do, the next date that was, that was made possible was the date of our school board meeting. And so I, I'm recommending that we back the school board meeting by one week and have it the first, I'm having a hard time seeing it from here, the first Tuesday in June, and then on the 12th, instead of the 12th. And that way, we can have our school board meeting and at the same time have our graduation.
Thank you. Another motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the change of the Tuesday, June 12, 2018, school board meeting to Tuesday, June 5, 2018, at 7:00 PM, due to the change of Osborne High School's graduation date.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Albert, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the change of the June 12, 2018, school board meeting to Tuesday, June 5, 2018, to accommodate Osborne's changed graduation date. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Demaria.
Ms. Seberg, and I were just discussing, do we have a primary date set this year, if we have a primary? Is that gonna be the 12th? Does anybody know? And if we do, if we have to close school that day, we can still have graduation, correct? Would that be an issue? I don't think it would be. I'm just asking the question.
It would not be, because we, if Jiffy Lube wasn't already being used by Prince William County Schools, we could have had graduation on Saturday, but it's already, it's already occupied, so, and that's not a school day, so.
Okay. All right. And my second question is, did we just pick June 5th because it was the Tuesday? I was wondering, on my calendar, I've already blocked off the 11th. Could our board meeting be on Monday instead of Tuesday? Would that be objectionable, or should we keep them on Tuesdays? Just as a thought. Well, this room might not be available either, and-
You had a city council meeting that night.
Yeah. Okay, never mind. I'm done with my discussion, sir.
Good point. Ms. Seberg?
Nothing else.
Mr. O'Hamlin, Ms. Williams, Mr. Albert, any comments on this?
Graduation.
Okay. Well, a motion by Mr. Albert, second by Ms. Kiefer, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the change of the Tuesday, June 12, 2018, school board meeting to Tuesday, June 5, 2018, to accommodate Osborne's changed graduation date. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carry, seven to zero. So we have a new graduation date and a school board meeting, June 5, 2018. Next on the agenda, finance and operations, the energy performance contract.
Good evening again. We, we're bringing back the energy performance contract for approval tonight. It was presented to the school board at our, at our last meeting. I do have Whit Blake and his team from Johnson Controls here tonight to, to, we can go over the presentation again, if that's what the board would like us to do. Let me do it again.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the energy performance contract with Johnson Controls Incorporated and the related tax- performance contract with Johnson Controls, Inc., and the related tax-exempt lease purchase agreement to allow financing in the amount of $5,378,195.
Second. Motion by Mr. Demary, second by Mr. Orhannon, that the school board, the City of Manassas, approve the energy performance contract with Johnson Controls, Inc., and the related tax-exempt lease purchase agreement to allow the financing in the amount of $5,378,195. Any discussion?
Sir, we've had no changes since our last presentation. We've seen everything already.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So...
Ms. Kiefer.
A quick question. I thought that when I had compared the last presentation with this, there was a slight difference in the financed amount?
Oh, well, I'm sorry. When we last, at the last meeting, we did have an approximate number of what the buydown would be, of $1,625,000. And so what happened, we've had, we went through a RFP process, we bid out this project to be financed with major banks throughout the country, and the financing was higher than we had anticipated simply because when the president and Congress enacted the latest tax legislation, one of the things that they did when it took effect with that is that they stopped subsidizing our programs that were vehicles that localities used to afford infrastructure improvements in their communities, which made our interest rates go up higher than we had anticipated. So the buydown now is, instead of being what we thought about $1,625,000, I think it's $1,755,000 at this time. But it makes, we had the money already allocated within our current CIP and we should be fine. So I do apologize for that.
So in that case, I agree, you can figure a presentation right here. So a motion is made by Mr. Demary, second by Mr. Orhannon, that the school board, the City of Manassas, approve the energy performance contract with Johnson Controls, Inc., and the related tax-exempt lease purchase agreement to allow financing in the amount of $5,378,195. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, 7-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board, the City of Manassas, have a closed session. Pursuant to exemptions from open meetings as allowed by Section 2.2, 3711. Part A, Paragraph 1, Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for the following purposes. Section 2.2, 3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personality Matters. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have entered closed session. Thank you.